Thank you very much. Good afternoon and welcome to Special Media Council is going to be held on Wednesday, October 30th, 2024. Meeting will be called over at 5:00 PM. This meeting is going to be livestreamed as well as on Facebook Live, so please be tuned in. Hopefully you'll understand the process we're going through. We're going to have a lot of details over the next hour, hour and a half in regards to the ALC's model, funding and process going forward. So I'll ask everybody to shut off their devices if they might vibrate or silence and then we'll get right into the process. Any disclosure of interest this evening? Hearing that, we have, Mr. Skorchenski is going to have a report on the Active Living Centre, but we have many guests as well that are going to be sharing some of their expertise and professionalism on the project, so they all have the opportunity to introduce each person as they had their own chance to speak or beforehand, whatever your choices.
Yeah, if I carry a worship, we'll make some introductions, so council knows who the faces are and their expertise on the project. Mr. Paris is also on virtually, unfortunately he's in the weather this week, but he's here as well. So directly to my left, Councilman Noel Ian Hill from Crystal Hill Architecture. So since 2023, Mr. Hill has been the project lead on the consultant team and has got us to this point, leading that group, which when we talked about this afternoon, we figured we're probably up to thirty-five professionals working on this project right now for the town of Marathon, which is larger than the staff we have at the town of Marathon, right? So tells you the complexity and the depth that's in the report tonight. Beside Mr. Hill is Doug Steele. Doug Steele is from TBT Engineering. And Mr. Steele is our geotechnical engineer of record for the project. On the virtual call today, we have Eric Zakruski, Eric's no stranger to council, formerly owner, operator, CEO of True Grid Engineering, now owns Phoenix Consulting. Mr. Zakruski has been the lead on our funding applications to date. And again, no stranger to council, Tim Commissal. Tim is now owns Tim Commissal Advisory. Mr. Commissal has been the lead on our financial plan for the project. And many will know Tim from his days as being a city manager in Thunder Bay. So a strong team here today to answer any questions council has. And with that, I'll jump right into the report.
Thank you.
So obviously tried to summarize the better part of ten years personally working on this project into a report that reads well and makes sense and doesn't try to overcomplicate things, but obviously answers and details the key points of the project and where we're at today. And then, of course, looking forward to engaging with council regarding questions and answers with the report on the project. So the background, town council has strategically identified the need for the Active Living Centre and the recreation complex. The existing recreation complex was built in the early nineteen seventies. The existing Lakeview Community Hall was built in the early nineteen fifties. Both facilities provided combined over a hundred twenty years of recreation and community service. Service of both facilities have reached the end of their useful lives and need to be replaced. Refurbishment and/or renovation of these facilities is not a viable option, nor is it a wise capital investment decision. Administration began working on the new Active Living Centre concept in 2015. To date, almost ten years later, hundreds of thousands of hours have been invested in developing the project to bring it to council today, October 30th, 2024. Below, a summarized chronology of the project has been listed. 2015 Project Start, 2016 Public Consultation Number One, 2017 January Public Consultation Number Two, 2017 March Project Preliminary Financial Plan, completed by MNP, Mr. Commissal at the time, 2017 July Public Consultation Number Three, 2017 September Visability Study Report Completion, 2017 November Visability Study Number Two and Public Report, 2018 February Case for Funding Support Report, 2019 November Case for Funding Support Report Updated, 2019 Application Submitted to the Investing Canada Infrastructure Program, 2021 Notification of Unsuccessful Application, 2021 Development of a New ALC Funding Plan, Visiting the Lake Superior Waterfront Location, 2022 November New Plan Presenting to Council, and 2022 November New Active Living Centre Concept and Plan Approved by Council. As time has progressed, the town has slowly grown and moved away from the water. This project will aim to reestablish the waterfront as the hub for activity for the community. The Active Living Centre is the driving force in bringing the town back to the water. A tremendous amount of planning work has been completed in 2023 and 2024 to arrive at this critical project milestone. Below is a comprehensive list of major project undertakings and accomplishments to date. Evaluation of the project development site, functional program development, conceptual schematic design and costing, Class D cost estimate completion, approval of schematic design and costing and proceed to design development, preparation of design development drawings and specifications, completion of cost estimate Class C design brief, approval of design development and proceed to construction drawings, prepare construction drawings and specifications, Class B cost estimate completion, approval of Class B eighty-five percent completion construction documents, completion of Active Living Centre proposed capital budget and financial plan as of October 2024, federal green inclusive building fund application submitted for thirty-five million dollars, October 24, and securing of one million dollars from our partners in BN and five hundred thousand dollars from our partners in NN for the project. The application for the Ontario Community Sport and Recreation Fund for fifteen million dollars is currently sixty percent complete and is scheduled to be submitted by mid-November. Following that submission, a funding application will be submitted to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Green Municipal Plan. Overall, the financial sustainability plan for the proposed ALC relies on diversified capital funding sources, development of an ongoing facility business plan, which includes ongoing revenue generation, operational and energy efficiency, and marketing engagement strategies to ensure high facility usage and regional support. With these elements in place, the facility will provide lasting benefits to Marathon residents, our First Nation partners, and the surrounding communities while remaining financially viable for years to come. On the operational side, the construction of the new ALC will provide a significant financial sustainability benefit to municipal operations based on decommissioning current recreation facilities that are at the end of their useful life and have current high slash poor facility condition index ratings. The ALC is designed and will be constructed at a very high energy efficiency rating, net zero building design standards, which will provide more opportunities for net cost savings. While a detailed financial analysis demonstrate the ALC project's strengths, affordability and sustainability, it is important to note that the project will only proceed to construction based on available capital funds. This stated now is the time to tender a once-in-a-lifetime project and contain the momentum as we've built over the last ten years. Financially, given both the diverse functional scope of the project and the higher cost of construction in Northern Ontario, the overall cost on a square meter basis is comparable to other recent community centre construction costs across Ontario. A key to achieving competitive construction cost is to move forward to the tender stage expeditiously to ensure maximum exposure of the project well in advance of the 2025 construction season. It has been estimated that delaying going to tender in 2025 will result in a cost escalation of approximately three percent per year, which equates to about two point one million dollars and compounded yearly by CPI increases, cost, consumer price index. Diversified capital funding support to build the Active Living Centre is key and assures this legacy community investment will be affordable to Marathon residents as well as being financially sustainable. The table below outlines in detail the proposed capital costs as well as a proposed capital funding plan to support the project. So rather than going through the table verbatim, what I'll do while you worship is just highlight the pre and the hard and soft construction costs and then we can go into detail with council regarding questions on the financial plan itself. The total construction cost pre-tender is sixty-nine million, six hundred and twenty and eight hundred and sixty dollars. Capital costs not included in the tender, which are the soft costs, seven point eight million dollars, which brings us to a total estimated capital cost of seventy-seven point five one seven million dollars for the entire project. So the options being presented to council at our meeting this evening, at this point in the project's development lifecycle, there is no further work that administration and the project development team can complete to further project on the planning side. A decision must be made on the future of the project. Based on the foregoing, administration is presenting council with the following options. A, proceed with Class A final project engineering, design and construction tender documents in November, December 2024 and tender the Marathon Active Living Centre project nationally in January 2025. Proceeding to tender does not find the municipality as the project would be subject to final budget approval inclusive of funding partner contributions. Any successful tender subject to funding would be approved by council and a proper legal contract entered into being bound by the mayor and the clerk. Option B for council, do not proceed with tendering the project at this time. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that council directs the CAO clerk to proceed to construction tender in January 2025 through a competitive process for the Active Living Centre based on the Class B cost estimates provided by Hanscom, October twenty-four.
Great. Thanks for the information. As you can see, we have the report in front of us. I don't know if everybody's got it on the computer. I've got a hard copy. If you'd like to go through some of the key components of that, the one big thing is that council discussed in the past ten years or so is the affordability of the community. That's the key aspect. I think you identified that option A with the affordability going to tender was not bound by this municipality until the financial means were there by both our federal provincial partners as well as corporate citizens and of course we'll relate back to the great areas of our community. All of us will pay an increase in value in our properties to cover off the cost of the operations as well as the loan that we're going to have to take, so. I want to put on the floor for council to see if there's any uncertainties that they might have within their thoughts of this process and then we get into our discussions with the few people on the project. Maybe, council of balance?
Not necessarily uncertainties, but I did have a conversation with our CEO, Mr. Skorchenski, and just within the report, we see that an application has already been submitted. It was unsuccessful, so just for the public's knowledge, can we get kind of asked why it wasn't successful then and what we've done different as a strategy for this new application and what that looks like kind of there?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. And if we look back under that submission, it was the former Active Living Centre plan that we had at the time, which was located on Stevens Avenue. It was under the Investing Canada funding stream, which was the federal government provided the funds to the provincial government and then you submitted your application through the provincial government process, which we did. We did have a strong application. The mayor and I lobbied it a number of times through Roma and AMO. We were unsuccessful and part of the process was there was no debris. If you were unsuccessful, you literally got a letter saying you were unsuccessful. But of course, we found out after the fact there were other projects located between Thunder Bay and Sault Ste. Marie that did receive funding under the project. We know there's generally, you know, an envelope of funding that's allocated to certain regions. We were unsuccessful. It wasn't because we didn't have a strong application. You know, it's limited funding on a competitive basis. No different than these funding programs are now. The big difference in 2024 versus when we submitted that application in 2019 is that was, you know, one-shot deal. The application went in, you were successful or you weren't. And what you see in the financial plan, which of course after council makes a decision today, will become a public document, is, you know, we spread out the risk of the project across a number of different funding fronts. So, you know, we submitted our application to the Green Investment Community Building Fund. We're submitting to the Ontario Sport and Recreation Fund, Federation of Canadian Municipalities. So, you know, also looking at private contributions, contributions from our First Nation partners. So the project is very much de-risk on the funding side versus 2019.
And I think this is one to follow up on that. The funds weren't in 2019 allocated both from federal and provincial levels at that time. It was more just provincial. The federal has come up with five hundred million dollars aside as well, so the green fund is much more advantageous for us. So they're both going to be oversubscribed. We know that. We were told that in the past, but every other program that's ever announced by government is oversubscribed for certain aspects. So what it is, we have to sell our project and we've done a great job selling it in regards to the benefit not only for our community, but our indigenous neighbours as well as our regional neighbours and the benefit of us having that facility for the future, right? So that's a key aspect. Whether or not we're successful, we're going to find out at the end of the day if we approve this and go forward and see what it looks like in the new year, but council, eh?
Yeah, and certainly I think we need to move forward, from my perspective, in order to see if we're going to be successful and I hope that we are. It's obviously we've got a really good team and that's would be the best thing. I do wonder though, as we go through this, I think one of the questions I get lots is what if we're not successful on the funding side and what would a plan beyond that look like? Do you re-tender? Do you re-find, try to find new sources of funding or is there an alternative path? And I just think in terms of, you know, whenever we make big life decisions, we obviously plan for what we would like, but we need to be also realistic about our next step so it can be quick moving forward. So I don't know if that's a, just because we have the experts in the room, whether some of that conversation might be able to take place.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm certainly happy to take the first crack at it, you know, sitting in this chair every day. Certainly that crosses my mind every day. You know, but I think, you know, we literally meet on a daily basis, if not twice daily, right? And, you know, that really is a question that, you know, we truly can answer until we tender the project, we get all our funding application submissions in and we find out our success rate, right? Once we have those in place, right, then we're able to determine on a go-forward basis, you know, is the project funded in whole? You know, what's the percentage of funding that maybe we didn't get that we can make up? You know, do we have to re-look at the project as a whole? You know, I think it's probably remiss at this point in 2024, you know, not to think that we're not going to be successful. You know, but we do talk about, you know, I would not say in hard terms, but in softer terms on, you know, timelines around recircling back, you know, if we're not successful. So, you know, really what we've done up to today is we've set the stage, right? We've met every deadline we possibly can to arrive the project at a spring construction start. And, you know, if we have to readjust our plans at that time, then we come back to council. And we really have two options at that point, right? Option A, you know, thinking progressively and successfully is, you know, we're asking council to approve a tender so we can start construction. If it's not A, then B is we need to have that conversation around, you know, what does the project look like going forward from spring 2025? So I'm happy to ask my colleagues on the call today based on their experience to also put that comment on that as somebody of, you know, hundreds of years on this call and go jet experience. So maybe I'll start with Ian and then over to Mr. Commissal and Mr. Zakruski.
Yeah, it just, councillor Ray, to respond, you know, what do you do if this project can move forward? It's really, and it happens more often sometimes than it doesn't. Okay, and of course, given that there's more variables, the more variables there are, sometimes this is out to happen. I certainly wanted to reassure and say that in all of this process, the last thing anyone needs to feel that there's really any kind of sense of failure, right? It is not failure, but knowledge that's captured in this whole path above your site is tremendously valuable. And everyone's determined that there is the need to connect this community back to its waterfront in a fundamental capacity. I think that that was a huge crossroads for the town of Marathon to see how important that is. At some point, and I will simplify it, and it is like being at home at times or in making really super big decisions and really clearly if there isn't enough money to do this, but there's enough money to do that, then you do a value analysis, right? You core down, as, you know, Daryl's sharing with everybody, you're going to convene and you're going to meet and you're going to determine then what are the values of this community and what are we invested in? And what is the most important thing we are going to move forward because this town of Marathon is going to wake up the very next morning. They're still going to have a very old pool and they're still going to have a very old arena. They're still going to be disconnected from the waterfront. And everyone wants, you know, the people that really love living in this community and being an Ordnance knows that we need to do something, A for ourselves, for our parents, for our grandparents and for our kids. And those are true important values. So you are going to do something. And I think that's, I think we've got to remain committed to and not feel any sense that this thing is, you know, climbing a cliff and there's a chasm at the other side. It's quite the opposite. I think there's a fantastic opportunity for whatever's going to happen through this tender process. And as designers, we do encounter often enough things that we have to change or things that we have to pivot on or things that we might have to contemplate on doing. There's going to be a tremendous amount of information discovered in all of this in terms of the funding partners that everybody in this community has been working super hard to establish relationships and capture the funding as well as working really hard on making sure that there aren't any surprises in the tender opening, right? That there is cost control, that the market responds to the way that the costing industry anticipates it would. And again, as Daryl's pointed out, we have this thing called market escalation and it won't ever go away. It's what I live with every day. And it's not to feel pressured by that. It's just acknowledge that it will be more expensive the following year, right? And it just puts that much more on us to try to go capture more funding for the following year or the year after that. And that our funding sources recognize and respect that market escalation, A realize, they must have to realize a few years from now, everything does cost more so that they can support these things. In, I would encourage you to try to avoid the market escalation. We're at a point right now, and I can, I can share that just based on the data and some of the flow that we're seeing in terms of costing, is that we've seen a balance point a little bit. We're seeing a stability in pricing. There's a good place to be to price a project. It is not at an unexpected or unanticipated change level and you'll be reading that every day, right? Inflation better under control. We're not seeing the kind of escalation that we experienced in the past few years. That makes the market more settled. The people that are bidding the work feel more settled right now. It's probably a very good time to go and try to capture price. So I think that's the only thing that, you know, that I could try to add to, council, but yeah, absolutely. You're trying to forecast the future and it takes such tremendous courage and patience to say there is a future. Not sure what it is, but not feel unsettled about it. Because you live adjacent to the biggest freshwater lake in the world. You know it and you're going to do something about it. I appreciate that.
Thank you for the summary and I really appreciate it. I think this council is one hundred percent committed to the facility. I think the council raised questions, obviously, what is the next step if it doesn't work? We'll get to that step, I think, in the spring of 2025. That'll be a whole nother revisit if the funding model was in the play, we wanted to roll over.
And I think what I liked when I started too was that all of the work that's been done and that we're about to do will be valuable to whatever that is. And so it's not, that's the piece that really resonates.
And you made a very clear point. Sorry, gentlemen, I'll come to you in a second, but the market escalation portion is this key and not only that, and we've been telling government, Mr. Skorchenski and I, and at many of our various meetings over the last several years, we live in the north. There's an added cost of moba dimo in the north. We know what that number is. We couldn't give it to them directly, but we all know that's reality. We don't have the big construction companies living in our community. So the competitive model in Southern Ontario is going to be a lot different than it is in Northern Ontario because of that very thing. So you add that on to any cost of, say, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent, whatever that market cost driven by the moba dimo of individual employees and housing for a two, two and a half year project, that's a huge amount of the project cost as well. So government doesn't get that in the big scheme of things because they're dealing with projects that are similarly within a hundred kilometer radius of most of the construction companies home base. So a lot of people come home every day and don't have to pay for the hotel room, the food, so. Thanks for the, I'm going to Eric and Tim. So do you want to step in and try to give us an overview of those thoughts and the council's vision?
I can go, Tim. Just through you, Mr. Chair and your worship, just a couple of comments on that. So as administration outlined, timing is really everything when it comes to projects of this significance and this amount of capital. And the ten years of work and all of those items that have been listed in council's report have really led to this moment in time and this decision by council to proceed with the rest of a process. Another point I think that's really key in this is that, you know, what administration is asking for today is really just to find out the rest of the story, that it's not new, anything new beyond the last council resolution to approve approve the Class B design process and all of those costs. This is simply looking to go to market and validate all the data and all the information and all the financial models and all the costing and engineering work that's been done to date. So it's probably one of the most important steps, but it's not really any type of, it's not a new resolution that is being sought here. The work that has been done in terms of the funding that is out there and is available and that we're pursuing, we have a very solid foundation and platform to pursue funding from senior levels of government. I can say that in thirty years, I've never seen a project better postured in terms of the technical and financial supporting documentation that the town of Marathon has to go to senior levels of government with. When we did our pre-consultation work with the federal program, the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Program, I can tell you I attended meetings with hundreds of other municipalities and other applicants. And I can safely say that in the room, right off the top, Marathon would be in the top one percent in terms of the level of preparation to advance funding applications. There were many municipalities, as his worship mentioned, that will be competitively seeking these dollars. But there was a clear sense that many had not even started the process of doing their homework on projects of this nature and/or of retrofits. So if I could give council some sense, you know, I think there is not a better project positioned more appropriately to attempt to capture funding, significant funding to advance the project. On the provincial side, and actually both programs that we're looking at applying for funding from, this project, the ALC project is literally, it's like the terms of reference have been written for this project in Marathon. We check every single box very strongly. And, you know, as I think we all know, we have to temper that with, we never know what the response might be, you know, in terms of our success or whether we're approved. But as far as the terms of reference go, as far as our applications and all of our supporting foundation documents, I've never seen anything stronger. So we are applying for thirty-five million dollars from the federal government, from the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Fund. I should note that the typical maximum is twenty-five. However, Marathon's project so strongly checks all of the boxes and in fact, then some, we are asking and seeking special consideration, which is part of the process, for thirty-five million, so an additional ten million dollar top up there. And from what we see of the program, we believe our chances are very strong. And provided the federal government really wants to see a project on a dot on the map in northwestern Ontario, we really like our chances. On the provincial side, the typical value is ten million and again, we're applying for fifteen, we're applying for an extra five on a special consideration basis because this project strikes so many different elements and criteria for evaluation that we feel, well, we have nothing to lose, quite frankly. Our worst case, we feel is that we'll get the ten million. But the project checks so many boxes and has so many strong elements in it that we're pursuing fifteen million dollars there. So to put in perspective, potentially capturing fifty So to put in perspective, potentially capturing $50 million, uh, just with those two levels of government is, is a, uh, is a huge checkmark, uh, as far as the viability of this project goes financially. So happy to take any questions about the, the funding itself, um, or what's presented here. And I know my colleague, Tim, is, is available for anything specific on the financial model or the, uh, operating financials.
Thanks, thanks for that, Eric. Council also had a question in regards to that.
Yeah, there was a comment made regarding, um, other funding applications being submitted, but not necessarily being to the level that ours is at. Do we know through our network if there's any applications between Susay Marine Thunder Bay that are going to be necessarily competing with ours? Or?
The.
Go ahead, Eric, maybe, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. So, um, that, that information isn't public knowledge. Um, there were some meetings that were hosted by the federal government as part of the program orientation. So you got to look around the virtual room. Um, there were no other municipalities present at that, but that does not mean that, of course, many are applying. What we've heard through, um, I guess our networks, as you say, um, we expect Thunder Bay to apply for, uh, some funds for their, their soccer facility. Um, which again is, is not exactly, I think, in the same league for many elements as the Active Living Centre. Um, it's a very, uh, secular or, or sort of, it's not as multi-use and as diverse. Uh, it does not check nearly as many, uh, boxes, uh, as the, the ALC does. And I think probably from an, um, one of our strengths is the Indigenous Community Partnership Support that, uh, uh, administration and councils work so hard to secure. Um, I can tell you the feedback we've gotten in working with the funding officers as we've posed questions and worked through the process. Um, minds were literally blown that the town of Marathon has been able to partner with its two most proximal uh, Indigenous communities and actually obtain equity, uh, support for the project. From an application writer's standpoint, nothing can write as strongly. When you get to that section about, um, consultation engagement and Indigenous engagement, there's no stronger proof than a letter that says those communities are all in and they are providing their own funds to help Marathon advance this project. So I, I can tell council that minds were blown at the federal and provincial level that, that you've been able to achieve that. And I think that is going to be one of our strengths to, uh, not only be considered for, for the typical funding, but for, uh, the additional asks that we have on the table.
Thanks, Eric. Mr. Skorchinsky had a comment.
If I could, your worship, I just, uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Comesso to, obviously, you know, I suspected this was going to be the, the topic of the conversation around finances, of course. Um, but just to highlight really two things. And, and one is, you know, the affordability of the project for Marathon. And when you boil it down, you know, you know, our contribution, assuming we're successful, is extremely competitive from an affordability perspective. And then drill down a little further back and, you know, what that means for the average taxpayer in Marathon. Because that's what, you know, the average taxpayer is going to want to know. And we've done those analyses. So I think it's important, um, that the expert that put it together, you know, highlighting, highlights it for us. And as I said, this will become a public document on October 31st.
Sure, appreciate that, Daryl and through you, Mayor. Um, yeah, so just on that component, and I, you know, had the discussions with your treasurer. Um, there's really three components when I look at affordability. Okay, so are you financing this with debt that goes on your books and you have to pay it? What extent is the actual facility when it operates compared to, you know, the rec center and the, uh, Lakeview, uh, facility? What's the incremental cost? And then is there anything else that's coming, which is over and above? So right now, if you can achieve what's outlined in the report, which is essentially you've got six other funding partners and six in total, sorry, five others would provide 90% of the funding. So, you know, your share is quite frankly in that sort of seven, seven and a half million. Then you're only looking at an impact in the typical taxpayer, which is about 100,000 assessed value, 2,900 a year of about $200 directly related to this project. So anything else that you do in terms of increasing your budget is, you know, in addition. So, but the incremental impact, this project comes on 2027. Best estimate is about $200 for those homes that are paying roughly 2,900. Um, now, you know, we will get more information, we'll get closer, we'll nail down the operating costs more. But I think, you know, we've been looking at it from sort of six different ways and we think it's reasonable. Again, the key is to secure as much non-town, town funding as you can get. And, um, I think there's, I just want to go back a little bit to why this project, I think, is really strategically positioned for funding applications. Without getting into it, I've got a long experience. First of all, the value of the project is very, uh, it, it may appear high, but relative to other competing projects, it's actually fairly good. And it's a integrated facility. You've got a pool, you've got two pools, you've got an arena, you've got gyms, you've got other facilities that bring together under one roof, all of your recreation leisure. And then in addition to serving the town, has strong support from the community, from the region. It's a non-controversial project. It's not a project, when the funders look at it, they say, you know, where's the community at that? I think you can say fully that there is strong support. The other thing, it's on the waterfront. And I don't know what waterfronts do, but waterfronts seem to attract interest from feds and province for funding. And that's been my experience over the years that, I mean, when I was at Thunder Bay, you know, the province handed us $37 million to do the waterfront for Thunder Bay. You know, and, and in addition to that, there was also some federal funding. But I, I just, I really like the way the project is structured. I really like the design. It's not overdesigned. You know, it's a very, um, practical and kind of contemporary. But I think it's a project that'll be looked at as one that fits really well. And I think it'll get a fair shake. And I think to, you know, Eric's point, this is a highly competitive process. So when you go into it, you put your best foot forward, you, you give it your best shot. And that's really the focus of getting everything in those applications that checks every box. Having said that, you know, if we're able to achieve that 90%, even 85%, I think it's a different discussion with town council because then it's really putting the town piece together to make it happen. And then of course, you know, and it's the primary recommendation from Daryl is, you know, to move forward to try to lock down certainty around the costing. So we'll leave it at that.
Thanks, uh, thanks for that, Tim. I think the reality is, I think what's happening in the community, uh, more and more people are afraid of what the impact assessment is going to look like in the next cycle. Cause we haven't been reassessed since 2016, but it's all about education. I've been trying to educate as many people as possible we can. If your home's, your home's assessed at 29, uh, 100,000 dollars, you're paying 2,900 dollars. We're not going to be, because you went to a 300 dollar, a 300,000 dollar assessment, we're not going to be still charging you a 3% ratio on that 300,000. So your tax will still be roughly 2,900 dollars. But whatever the increases needed from either the ALC or the regular operation of the municipality. That's an education tool we have to get out more from impact, best, best, uh, for, for that to be part of the community. Cause that's a big part of it. People are afraid of that, as they're saying.
Yeah, that's a, I could comment with her. It, it's a very valid point. I mean, the adjustment in, in impact assessment is a zero sum game. It's just the redistribution of assessment relative to the increase in value of property. So it isn't intended to add to the tax base. It's really just, you know, whose property has gone up more than others. So notwithstanding that, I, you know, I'm not sure where your average assessment will come in. And it's, it's unfortunate that province hasn't done anything since 2016, so, but it's a good point.
I think more than any, just an education tool for us, council. So that's what the scary part of the street seems to be, is that I'm going to build in the ALC and let's just say our portion is even $10 million. What does that look like? Am I going to be paying 600, 800 dollars a month, a year of taxation? And so that's, we have to calm that storm. Uh, and because this council has been very clear and transparent about what we're, we're asking the ratepayers to pay. So we will, we will educate them more with impact's help in regards to that, when that is suspect cycle. Probably won't be till 25 as we all know, because it will probably be a spring, a summer election. And then the government will release hopefully the impact reassessments in 25. Mr. Skorchinsky.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, worship. And I, and I think it's, you know, it's extremely, you know, important to note for ratepayers, Eric, is, you know, our discussions to date, right, including our strategic planning exercise on Monday, right? Was, you know, the, the discussion wasn't, you know, do we need to raise the tax levy by X to achieve this project? Right? It was, you know, looking at, you know, the affordability of the project, right? The need, and we know the need is there, right? Because we, we run the risk of not having any recreation if we don't move forward. But how do we balance that utilizing the tax levy? Utilizing a tool like the municipal accommodation tax, which we know is increasing? And then utilizing and looking at, you know, our ability to utilize reserves and debenture. Right? So it's not as straightforward as just saying, you know, it's an X amount tax increase. Right? It's another financial exercise to complete once we know where we stand through the tender process and the funding process.
Uh, uh, absolutely. Everybody has to realize it's a 25 year mortgage similar to your home, but it's going to be in the same scenario that we're the municipality paying the mortgage on your activities within the community. You're going to pay user fee as well as we all know, as you do today. Uh, one thing we've never taken into consideration in this model, this financial model, is the potential of a new mine come to our community. That has not been worked into this scenario. So for everybody in the community to understand that, if it does, if and when that does happen, which we all believe that there is a mine in our backyard, that will relieve a lot more pressure on the municipality going forward. But that number has not been built into any of these numbers. This is a straight going forward number with, what we have today. So that's a clear indication for the members of the community to realize that this is going to come from all of us as a mortgage. And, and then we go forward if, if the mine goes forward in our backyard. And literally, we're going to have a lot easier road going forward to pay down those, uh, those long-term debentures or, or mortgage, whatever that might look like.
Yeah, that's, uh, glad you brought that up. It's, it's, you know, it's extremely poignant. And, you know, I think what we've done through the financial plan, right, is, you know, we built a model, right? That is true to the financial modeling process itself. We didn't include, well, let's hope generation builds a mine and we can assess it at a million dollars and then we have an affordable project. What we're presenting to council tonight is we have an affordable project based on our ability to pay and the funding applications that we're submitting. So as, as, you know, Mr. Comesso said, you know, we've put the best possible project forward to council as well as the funding partners that we're hoping to attract. And from an administrative perspective, that's all we can possibly do at this point in the process.
Quick question. Mr. Comesso, Ralph.
Um, when we talk about taxation piece in that, is that only on the residential ratio or are we also being able to tax industrial ratio, all of those, the other categories too, or?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, you know, as, as, you know, Merduus indicated, it's a, you know, assessment is complicated, right? Cause most people don't understand, just like, you know, they don't understand, you know, you ask the average person, you know, what does tax ratio mean? They don't, you know, it, it doesn't resonate. So again, you know, it would be a financial analysis that we complete, uh, you know, looking at what that tax levy requirement is. So we'd be a bit remiss today to say, you know, it would be on the backs of, you know, residential only. It would be an analysis we would have to complete once we complete this process.
So I was struggling in my slide because Mr. Skorchinsky, uh, mentioned about the ability to pay. So that's the reality. We are governed by the provincial government under legislation to say that we cannot overextend their funding. So the ability to pay is already earmarked within our mandate. So we know that we cannot go beyond that threshold based on the, the Legislation Act of Ontario. So I laughed because when in 91, when I got out of council, we didn't have the ability to pay. We were so far in debt of some 14 and a half million dollars of unfinanced debt. We were in overdraft at the local bank. We had to go with the venture. We got through that and we financed that, those debentures of over a 10 year period and we got back on track. But in this case, we're going with our eyes wide open and we know we have the ability to pay that, that, uh, debenture mortgage slash, uh, the next 25 years or 30 years, whatever that, that term looks like, right? In that seven to 10 million dollar window. So that's what we need to bring to the public after today's meeting is the confidence, the confidence that we have within our team, Mr. Skorchinsky and all the members we see on the, on the process, looking at those numbers. Cause they're the professionals, we're not. They put the numbers together based on their professionalism, understanding of the market, the architectural designs, the landscape designs, the financial designs, all those various things. As you heard from, from Eric, uh, the project has got a lot of good merits, like as you top it, top of the scale merits in regards to its, uh, its viability. So we know that. We've had great conversations, Mr. Skorchinsky and myself, with, with ministers and government representatives. So we just have to see how the process unfolds with the approval of council going forward. Uh, we can be lengthy, you know, this a lot longer, but if you have any other questions, that'd be great.
Yeah, uh, just to kind of go back, um, Mr. Skorchinsky has talked about this a few times, but just for the public, could you outline maybe high level? You said we have a risk of not having any recreation if this doesn't go ahead? This, can you elaborate on that just more for the public?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to answer it. So, you know, obviously, you know, we lost our pool in 2023, right? Uh, you know, out of our control, right? You know, we had an architectural and engineering failure, you know, within a, a 1972 constructed building. Right? We don't know, right, what the cost would be, right, to refurbish that if we even can. Right? We presented council with a very high level summarization at the time, right? That we thought, you know, five to eight million dollars would correct the structural steel issues. Right? That doesn't account for anything within that facility. We know, we look at our arena, right? We know it has a cracked foundation. We fixed it once, right? What happens if we can't fix it again? Right? We have a plant that Simcoe, and it's an ammonia-based plant, that Simcoe has told us unequivocally, we're going to give you three years on this plant and then we're not going to work on it again. Right? Very simply. Right? And on top of that, Mr. Hill and I had a very good conversation about another facility in Northwestern Ontario today. There's just not enough physical space within our current facility to make it barrier free. Right? There's just no way you can create that space based on its functional design. So realistically, we'd be looking at putting in similar type dollars that we probably couldn't attract government funding for, to try and refurbish a facility that we know has to close at some point. Right? And, and I guess the, you know, maybe the, the best comparison that I make, and maybe it's a little too real, right? But, you know, it's, and, and, you know, you know, Councilor Lake uses, you know, cradle to grave lots, right? These facilities were born, right? They've served a really useful life and now they're near death. And, you know, we can't skirt that. We've been doing that for the last 20 years. So we've arrived at this point where, you know, we have to make this decision to move forward. Right? With, you know, a project that is very functional, right? Services every demographic within our community, including being barrier free, right? Is an excellent fit for our First Nation partners and is affordable. From an administrative perspective, that's the best we can possibly do to bring to council.
Absolutely. Anybody else? I think we, we've worked this process out over the last year and a half, two years, really solid with your team and your team and, uh, Daryl and, uh, Mr. Skorchinsky and his team, Mr. Paris. Uh, it's been a long process, nine years. We have to go to the next phase and the next phase is not committing us to build unless the funding's there. That's very clear in the document. That's what the public be very clear on as well. With our funding partners, regional, provincially, corporate, uh, you know, First Nations, it all comes together, we're, we're going to build. But it doesn't come together, we have to revisit that and that might be spring of 25. What does it look like? How do we do it? As we heard from, uh, Mr. Hill, does that mean we scale down the project and go back to government and see if we can re-bang on the door with a smaller scale facility on the core assets of that? That will have to come in the spring of 25 discussions. But for now, we're going forward on discussions that we're building, uh, ALC with the items that were listed in the document. Right, Councilor?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I just, you know, it always makes me kind of laugh. So I think about, I've been, you know, like, my kid goes to the University of Southern Ontario now. And the, the kind of mindset of a working class, we had our mill closed, right? We're always looking for something bad to happen, like mine's going to shut down, whatever it is. But you don't have to live like that, right? Like, I think the, the best part about our community is how resilient we are. And I think if you can just, like, you have to plan in case it's going to go bad. Um, if we don't get the funding or whatever. But I just think it's such a hopeful project, right? But in the end, like I sit and I, I think like, you know, I got to answer all the questions for people listening who are maybe not swayed, like, I think this council table is swayed, we want to do it. But I just think like it's, I look forward to being really positive on it because I think, and what I loved hearing was, even if it doesn't look exactly like, we'd like it to look, that all of this work is leaning towards something that's better for our community and that just, uh, yeah, I just, uh, that makes me happy. I think that's really important to, to maybe for people who are listening and thinking about the project, it's time to be a little more hopeful about our own ability to be resilient and live in this place as opposed to waiting for something bad to happen.
Absolutely, Mr. Skorchinsky.
Yeah, just, I just, I just want to summarize for council, you know, the finality of administration's presentation. And, and, you know, it's a tremendous segue from Councilor Lake, right? And, and, you know, I, I, you know, there's always going to be detractors to anything that we're going to do, right? There's, there's no question about that. But, you know, But, you know, in this case, right, I think there should be a tremendous amount of excitement and energy with respect to the project. Right? I look what, you know, on Monday, you know, as I told the mayor, I've been sitting in this chair for ten years. And I look what we've accomplished as a team. You know, we built a senior supportive housing complex when the government wouldn't fund it, right? And now three other facilities in Ontario have built them just like ours. We had a golf course clubhouse burned down and we had a new one up in eight months. Right? We just opened a new works facility that's been on the books since the nineteen seventies, right? So I know internally, we have tremendous confidence in bringing this project forward to council and the community. And the community should have that confidence. Because everything we presented tonight, you know, from a financial, an engineering, an architectural perspective, right, is we have an extremely viable project and now is the time to move forward with that.
Yes, sir. I totally agree and thank you all for that. So I'm going to put the motion on the floor. I think, gentlemen, thank you for your time and that's really appreciative. So the motion here is that council, everybody accepts the attached report and recommendation on the Marathon Active Living Centre, ALC project in development, and that the administration be authorized to proceed with the Class A final project engineering design and construction tender documents in November, December of twenty-twenty-four and the tender of the Active Living Centre project nationally in January of twenty-twenty-five. And for that, any successful tender subject to funding, that's the key word, subject to funding, would be approved by a council and a proper legal contract into being bound by the mayor and the clerk of the town of Marathon. Move by. Commissioner Ralph, seconded by Councilor Lake. Any questions on that? So?
One question here?
Yes, sir.
So just a comment, I just want to thank everyone for all their hard work on the project and everything. And just one minute, thank you.
Yeah, it's been a long time ago and hopefully we're successful. We just sent off a letter to say with support from our First Nations chiefs, both Chief Duncan and Chief Louis, to the federal government to say that we need their attention on this project. Once we prove this tonight's meeting, that they're fully aware that we really need this. So as we heard from Eric and the application process, both provincial and federally, Mr. Skorchinski and myself, meeting with various ministers, this project is top of the pile. We just have to make, I'm going to wear that it has to get in, stay on top of the pile and get approved. Not, you know, it is a competitive process, but we need to make sure that they're really looking at Marathon region for this project to be as well. So with all that being said, with moving and segment's permission, I'll call a question on Gerber. Eric, thank you very much. And prior to Gerber, I want to thank, I think, up to you, thank both Eric and Tim online, all the hard work you've done for the community and put this back together, you continue working through this process over the next several months. For Cian and Doug, thank you very much for your assistance, being here live with us. Appreciate it and we'll continue working with you as well, going forward on the project and hopefully we'll have that tender out in January. Everything will be bang on and we'll have a whole bunch of interest out there. And who knows, maybe they'll come in at a lower tender price too. Hey, man? Wouldn't that be nice? So again, once, thank you very much, everybody, and have a great day. We'll adjourn at the hour of five fifty PM. Thank you. Have a good night. Thanks, guys.